writing everybody's name down. Hello and thank you so much for waiting. Sorry, I was having some technical difficulties getting my computer to connect. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And start with a roll call of council members. Tricia?
Here.
Amber?
Here.
Chelsea here. Laurel?
Here.
Kristen? Sorry, I'm trying to write and thinking at the same time. All right. Indication. This is, let me just make sure we're not. Making sure there was no other board members in our Zoom. And this is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another. Love of our school and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. All right. So that takes us to item 1.4. Are there any agenda modifications? Okay, item 1.5, audience to address the council. Just a reminder that anybody here to address the council on items not on the agenda. For items that are on the agenda, they will be timed during that individual item. And you will be limited to three minutes to speak. Is there anybody who is interested in speaking? I have Christina first and then Alicia. And then Ryan, I see your hand up, so we'll start there and we'll. We'll move on to anybody else that raises their hand up first. Okay? So Christina?
Yes, thank you. My name is Christina Miller. I'm on parent council. I have two children attending Blue Oak and I'll keep it really brief. I think you all saw my email. You know, the students here deserve better than the worst location of any school in Chico. It somewhat floors me that this is the proposed location for our children to go to school, a former burn dump. Regardless of whether the location is within an active site or not. Place where children go to school. And we should not have to, as parents, wonder if we're sending our children to a place where there's lead contamination that could affect their learning and their behavior. Their hearing, their speech, their growth and development. That is exactly what we want to prevent those issues. Yet we're willing to put our children at risk. It seems very ironic to me that this is the proposed location for our children. And then there's issues of the liability. I previously managed a landfill. I'm very well aware of the risks that landfills cause. And the potential liability, the cost to defend one claim for the school, even if it's not something that's deemed to be worthy. You'll spend over $100,000 in defense costs just defending the claim. It's just not in the school's best interest to choose this location. And then there's no trees. She goes hot. I don't know if you guys have been outside. I went outside when I picked my kids up from school yesterday. I counted the number of trees in the distinct play yard for the kids and there's 25 trees. We will have zero trees at this new location. And it's on lava cap, which will take years and years and years to grow an adequate shade under story, if it's even possible. Our children deserve more. They're worth more. This is a horrible location. We need to keep on looking. Just because we've looked and we've looked at 10 sites does not mean that you choose the 10th site just because you're tired of looking. You keep on going. You don't marry your 10th boyfriend just because you dated nine people prior. It's not the right site for the school. We need to move on to a site that is safe for our students, that we're confident in that when our kids go to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. And we did receive your emails, so thank you for sharing. Alicia? Alicia, are you still wanting to share? Yeah, okay. So Alicia, it looks like you're frozen, so we'll move on to Ryan and come back to you. Ryan did too. Did we just lose Ryan? Okay, well, Ryan has also dropped off. So that makes it Karen's turn.
Hi, can you hear me?
Karen, are you on on your computer and phone maybe?
Sorry about that. I'm not exactly sure what that was because I, I don't know. I'm very sorry about that. Is that much better?
It is, it is.
Okay. It woke everybody up, I guess, huh? I just wanted, I'm a brand new parent to Blue Oak. My daughter McKenna joined last year at the end of the year with Ms. McDonald. And then my other daughter Madeline is in sixth grade with Ms. Jones. And I was just thrilled when we found the school. I was not happy with Emma Wilson and I wasn't happy sending Maddie to Chico Junior and was just thrilled by just everything about Blue Oak, the location, just how it felt, the teachers, every, everything about it. And we've enjoyed last year and then the beginning of this year. I would just like to say, as a, the point of view of a newer person coming in, this site really scares me. I've read what Christina has written. I've kind of done a little bit of research on my own. But I'm just really disappointed that we're really thinking about, if we're even really still thinking about this site, because it doesn't really, it doesn't fit with Blue Oak. Blue Oak is so much about the earth and nature and the kids working in the dirt and growing things and just nurturing. And this site just turns me off completely to all of those things. It's a, it's a, it used to be a dump. And why are we wanting our kids to dig their hands in the dirt of a dump? You know, it just, it really scares me. I just, I just wanted to, you know, I just wanted to share my opinion. And I'm just really hoping that we can look at some other sites. I really, I know that you guys have been looking for quite a while. And I know it must be really frustrating, but I'm just really hoping that we can continue to look. So that's, those are my comments. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate your concerns. Okay. Adele?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Well, thanks for giving me the three minutes. I'll try to keep it under. I'm new here, so you know, this is all a new perspective for me. I only come in with the knowledge that I had previously. And I, I can only imagine that it was a ton of work to even take on this endeavor. I don't know the background of the financials. You know, there's a lot I need to admit that I don't know. The one thing I do know about this site is that it was a dump. And I distinctly remember city council trying to put houses on it long ago. And the answer was absolutely no. I know lead levels change over time. That was about 20 years ago, but you know, my daughter's in kindergarten and we're, we're still determining, are we going to stay or go? We love Blue Oak. We love it. It's such a heart-centered school. You won't find anything else like it. But this would be a game changer for us. This would be a deciding factor. And I don't know that I could say that I, I felt my kid was safe at that location. And you know, I'm sure you guys have been working really hard. I don't know if there's a lease that you guys are up against. You know, I'm sure there's lots to think about, but yeah, that's, that's a tough one. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your concerns, Adele. I appreciate you taking the time to come. Alicia, we didn't forget about you. We saw that you dropped off, but go ahead and take your three minutes now, please.
Thank you. Yes, our internet cracked out for a second. So I share the concerns with the new school site being a toxic burn dump and a battery recycling center. It just seems like it's the worst of the worst possible location with its history. And I was also really dismayed to find out that, yes, as Adele said, 20 years ago, the Chico City Council voted against allowing developers to build there because they all recognized that this was a toxic site, not good for development. I'm also concerned that the last time this site was tested was in 2004. And that there's a loophole for charter schools specifically in that not as extensive testing has to be done if we were a traditional public school. And that's very concerning. Because I would want to see all of the testing done as much as we can to make sure that levels are not really, and there's no toxins there. I mean, that's really what we want. And I also just want to say, you know, I can't in good faith send my son, my child that I'm in charge of, right? That I'm his parent. I have to make good choices for him. I can't in good faith send him to a school knowing that it sits on a toxic burn dump and battery recycling center. And I'm not alone in that thought. You know, a lot of folks have come to me, I think because I'm, you know, on parent council. And they just know my name or my face and they've said the same thing. So this is not, you know, just a few of us speaking up here, but not everybody can make the charter council meetings, unfortunately. But I speak for a lot of other parents who share these concerns. And concerns that there hasn't been more transparency with this process. Because I think that we could have mitigated maybe this problem earlier if we had gotten some community input about the site specifically, had we known that this site was in the running specifically. So I would just ask for that moving forward, a little more transparency with our community. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come speak, Alicia. We appreciate your input. Ryan? Go ahead.
Okay, hello. Hi, my name is Ryan and I am the treasurer of parent council and also a parent of a third grader. Sorry, so we both dropped off right at the same time, so I'm not sure if it was brought up. I know that a lot of the focus right now is on soils and soils testing, which is a concern I share as well. And I want to throw my, throw my full support behind those concerned folks because, because I am one of them as well. The one other thing I want to just bring up as well is the high voltage transmission lines that, as far as I can tell, are essentially zero feet from campus. That, you know, I think that there have been a few comments about this is kind of like the worst of all scenarios, but it really does have a few like major issues with it that the community at large is going to have major problems with. I am also the class rep in our class and so I get a decent amount of kind of feedback from, from our class and from people. Again, just kind of knowing that I'm on parent council and I get a lot of parents reaching out to me with these same kinds of concerns, both soils and the electrical lines. So I wanted to make sure that this council heard all the stuff the other council is hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ryan. I appreciate you taking the time to come tonight and giving us your input. Are there any other community or, yes, members of the community that would like to address the council? Thank you so much for those who shared this evening. We do really value your input and appreciate you taking the time to come very much. And we do, we do take all of those things into consideration. We can't have a discussion about them because we're not on an agenda item, but I do want to assure you that they are not. We don't dismiss your comments. All right, so with no other audience members to address the council, that does take us to item two, the consent agenda. And if anybody would like to make a motion, I am ready to entertain.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Laurel. Do I have a second? I'll second. Thank you, Amber, with a second. All right, I will call for the vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Amber? Aye. Tricia? Aye. Kristen? Aye. And Chelsea? Aye. All right, that takes us to item three, faculty. It looks like Sarah, are you here for the grade level report?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. I was having some internet issues as well and trying to figure this stuff out. Yeah, so Nick should be joining us in a little bit. So this is my first time, I think, on my own doing this.
You'll be great.
There's not like a lot to report at this, this time. I think everyone is plugging away. You know, we're feeling that, what are we, like week five or six at this point? So starting to get into the groove of school and getting ready for harvest. The festival and the play and this weather certainly helps all the kids and everyone kind of get into that fall mood, which is really nice. Do you have any questions for me?
No, sometimes little news is good news. That from you is good. So I'm so glad to hear that this school year seems to be running smoothly. You know, now that we're several weeks in and things are kind of hopefully settling back. And I know it's been a week this long to get my family back settled into a routine, so.
Yeah.
Still have questions? Nope, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Maybe, maybe there's something, Alex? All righty, that'll take us into item four. All right, governance. I will start with 4.1, Amber, the finance report. So there's not a ton to report. We didn't have the financials yet, just due to like a lot of other things in front of that on this plate. So just closing out the year, not a lot has changed. Talked more about kind of the whole harmless, sort of like where some of the money was moved around to, but I think we kind of talked about that here. And Susan has anything further to say about that. But otherwise, there wasn't a lot. It was pretty uneventful. Just talked about the EPA funds again and how about the shooter and just things like that, but nothing really different to report than from last one. Right after the meeting? That's good, it's always good.
Yeah.
The only thing I would add is just a clarification, we're no longer concerned about our cash.
Yes, they're great.
Yeah.
That is good. Yes. It's always nice when the little bird comes through. A fun time. Yeah. All right, well, thank you for that, Amber. All right, Tricia, parent council report? Yes, so they did their office for elections, like all of those and parent reps. I think there's still a few classes that we need to work on. They reviewed the bylaws, so they just went through them, didn't make any changes. And they're going to be looking at making some changes over the next. Let's see, Claire came in, just Claire came in and talked about some community ideas to kind of bring the school community together. And we might go date swap, like we'll, we'll, we'll approach the post different things. Right sharing. So she wants to really work on different ideas for that. Walking to winter is going to happen again, so we're starting to work on second and eighth. December 16th or 17th, right, versus the Saturday? Decided or not? The staff, so there's a couple of parents that are going into the staff lounge and cleaning and leaving snacks and so. More volunteers to help, help with that project on a regular basis, so they're meeting every Tuesday and Wednesday. We're also going to work on the staff photos, so that when you walk into the bios, so getting those updated with the new photos coming from the school year and things, bios up on the walls for teachers that have been here and doing their job. I just noticed. Yeah. Started talking a little bit about the harvest festival, pretty minimal. They have a kind of a subcommittee that's going to do most of the planning for that. The meeting ran pretty late. And then also talk about the school site and the concerns about the school site. What's the hot topic? Thank you, Tricia. If you have questions for Tricia? Or for Amber, since I forgot to ask if anybody has questions for Amber? No? Okay, great. That takes us into item 4.3, the Equity and Inclusion Task Force Report.
So the Equity and Inclusion Task Force has not met since the last meeting. However, the pedagogical team is beginning to work on choosing new novel sets. So they are, with the research and the information they've had from trainings and other things, they are beginning to work on a list of potential new novels and and doing some beginning reading and decisions about how, what books are we going to have to list that will be more inclusive of a variety of authors and so.
Yes, is it still Mondays?
It's still Monday.
Do you see it?
Yes.
Monday, 3:30?
3:30, yes. In this room, in this very room.
Okay, does anybody else have questions for Susan? Okay, great. That takes us to item 4.4 of the 19th spot. Any updates?
Yeah, so we have had some cases. We've just sent out three letters this year about classes where there was an exposure. So we are still doing independent study for those students who wish to stay home. But it's affecting us much less, I think, than last year, both of this of the percentage of students with shots and just the reduced time that people have to be out. We also received information last week that stated someone who is not vaccinated, a staff member who is not vaccinated, no longer has to be tested. So they are continuing to change the expectations, so we want to drop that expectation as well.
Susan, does anybody have any questions for Susan on the 19th spot?
Chelsea, I don't have a question. Is there any way to like turn up the volume on your all mic? It's really hard to hear. I don't know if there's any possibility of that, but Sarah was saying she was having trouble hearing and I'm having trouble hearing as well.
You can speak up, is that better?
Yeah, whatever can happen. Thank you.
Is, I mean, does that make a difference, Nick? We, it's normally a little bit closer. We can, we're working with a slightly different setup today, so we can work to mitigate it by just talking louder tonight and then maybe address the technology a little differently next time.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, I want to, and if anybody ever can't hear something and wants us to repeat it, please just speak up and ask for that. We will be happy to. All right, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, item 4.5, board member applicants. This is a long list. So it looks like we have Tricia applying for a parent seat and Vicky applying for a community seat. So Susan, with that, do we still need to vote to accept their?
Yes.
Applications? I thought so.
Accept them and vote that you agree that they can be committed.
Great. Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion. Is there anybody that has any questions or comments regarding the two, the two applicants and the two seats that are up for election? Hearing none, I will go ahead and make a motion, I'm so excited. I will make a motion that we accept Tricia Atteartua, the parent seat, and Vicky Wannacott, the community seat. And I'm sorry for trying to, that's terrible.
No, it was not, it was not actually terrible. It was really good.
So I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Great, thank you, Kristen, with a second. All right.
Congratulations.
Thanks. I will call for the vote, Laurel.
Aye, sorry, had to go off mute.
No worries. Amber? Aye. Tricia? I'm staying. Kristen? Aye. And Chelsea? Aye. Okay, that will take us then to item 4.6, to establish the BOCC roles. And if I remember correctly, that's chair, finance committee, secretary.
Vice chairman.
And vice chair and facilities manager.
Oh, yes, okay. So. Those are reps. These are the other ones are actual, right? Or no, finance committee is a rep also.
Yes, and then one of his committees that are head of the.
Oh, that's right. Because you are the head of finance committee when you're in the local.
Yeah, that's right.
Facilities, the chair, co-chair, facilities, finance and.
Secretary, secretary.
Okay. All these little details that only come up so rarely that I can't remember. Okay, well, I think we should just start if there's anybody who is interested in being in any one of these seats. We'll start there.
I mean, I don't mind staying finance unless somebody was very strongly wanting to do it. Time me. Party on my.
So I have all sections.
Yes.
Mugg has requested that Amber be his representative on facilities. Well, I'm just putting down Amber's. She is.
I tried. Okay, so are you interested in being on the facility?
Is facility like parent council or? Facilities is what, is the committee that will work on the design of the building. Yes.
But it's not one of these roles necessarily, it would just be an additional. No, no, because you're the head of the facilities committee.
As well, as well. So the life of finance, you're the head of that.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Absolutely correct. You can't do both facilities and finance. I'm really disappointed about that.
Oh, yeah.
But Laurel?
I think she's done a really wonderful job on finance committee. I think it's a, it's a, it's a big and very important role. And it seems to me that it's one also that takes a while to learn. And I feel like the reports have been effective and succinct, so that's just throwing my opinion in there. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, Laurel. Thank you, Laurel. I share your opinion on that.
I agree.
I, I would love for you to stay on the finance committee.
Sorry.
So would somebody like to officially nominate Amber to be finance committee?
Laurel?
Laurel, you're on mute.
Sorry. I, I'm sitting in Oregon, by the way. I nominate Amber for the, to continue on the finance committee.
This is Tricia, I'll second. Thank you very much, Laurel, both for the motion and for attending from Oregon. We really appreciate that. And then Tricia with a second. I will call for the vote on the finance chair. Laurel?
Aye.
Sorry, I was trying to catch you before you went back on mute. I tried.
I have my dog here. I have to stay on mute. Thank you.
Amber?
I'll, I'll stay.
Tricia?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And Chelsea? Aye. All right. One down. Okay, is there anybody else who's interested in a role? I have, I would be interested in serving another term as the chair.
I think that's fantastic. Great idea.
Right. I could step with the co-chair too. I would love that. I agree.
Chelsea, Chelsea, she was not, she was not speaking adequately to be heard.
Oh.
Nick, are you finding the same? I couldn't hear.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't want to talk too long because we're not doing the co-chair, but we can't, I approve if Chelsea wants to step into chair is what I was saying. And then I offer, maybe I could be co-chair because there's been talk of her. And then I offer, maybe I could be Co-Chair because there's been talk of her maybe stepping down one day. So that's all that was said, that's our Laurel.
No, thank you very much for repeating that.
Yeah, thank you for, for asking for the repetition. I think it's super important that everybody hears what's going on here.
So we need to make a motion?
A nomination.
Nomination.
This is Tricia, I nominate Chelsea for Chair. All right, so we have Tricia with the nomination and a second.
I'll second that, Amber.
All righty, well, then I will call for the vote, Laurel.
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Tricia?
Abstain.
Kristen?
Aye.
All right.
Chelsea, did, what was your vote?
What? Oh, Chelsea, aye. I didn't vote, thank you. Yeah, all right, so Co-Chair, Kristen has expressed interest. Is there anyone else that is interested in the Co-Chair position? I mean, not everybody, oh, no.
I think, I think her point about continuing to learn the role was, was an excellent one, and I nominate her.
I, I think that's great, Laurel, I do agree, and I really support that nomination, so I will second it.
Even if she does speak quietly.
That's the first I've heard that.
It's only because the microphone's kind of pointed away from.
All right, no, I just have to be heckler, I'm the heckler, thank you.
Well, Laurel, since you're off mute, I'll call for you, for your vote first.
Aye.
Thank you, Amber?
Abstain.
Tricia?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And Chelsea?
Aye.
Great. We're getting, we're getting low. So we have Facilities Committee and Secretary left.
Who's our Secretary currently?
Tricia.
That's news to me.
Oh. As the Secretary, you get to sign documents at most meetings, all minutes.
Oh.
And.
Tricia, would you be willing to continue?
Yeah, I'm willing to continue. So then we would need Leanna, Laurel, or Vicky to fill that Facilities. Right, because we can't cross over.
Correct. So.
So. Could you, you can't serve, can she serve on two?
I'm not seeing that necessarily, are you interested in that?
Yeah, I think no, because it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also she already does Parent Council, or Parent. Are you saying that because you're maybe interested in the Facilities Committee?
I don't know, I think it's. Yeah. Kinda, maybe, I guess I want to know the role, so it's a Chair role. So Susan, what's it going to entail?
So the main purpose of the Facilities Committee will be to work on the design of the building and design the property, how it's laid out. So you would be running the agendas and helping to plan the agendas. Though, and Buck would be the administrative staff member on there. So he's been heading up the Facilities Work Group until now.
I think Trish would be excellent during this particular time especially.
Yeah, it is a full committee, we had, have nine parents who are interested in it. And because of the way our bylaws are, we are able to put all nine on. So we have put all nine on. It's supposed to be a nice, full working group.
Wow.
I think you'd be fantastic. Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking of a tiny commitment, so.
Have you been to the meeting days yet?
No, and in fact, because the soil hasn't been tested yet, we're putting off the design now until we actually get the okay.
Yeah.
So we had intended to start this month, but Charity suggested once every two weeks for a few months.
Yeah.
It's really, and the design work, it's working, meeting with the Architect, Zoom online, and discussing, you know, answering these questions and directing. And so, seems like it's not going to be like an all year. Once a month anymore, a few months of regular meetings.
I mean, I will give it a try.
Could, could we support her by maybe myself taking over for PC Rep for a little for you? As far as just going to meetings to her to.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is like if.
I was actually going to suggest that you kind of are already going up.
Right.
To PC, if, like I'm not a representative, and then we're going to maybe get to that thing also.
Okay.
If somebody would take over that rep role, then I think that's.
Great, I would like to nominate Tricia for the Facilities Committee.
Second.
And then.
Second, Chelsea.
Thank you for your second, Laurel. And then I will call for the vote, Laurel.
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Tricia?
Kristen?
Aye.
And Chelsea?
Aye.
All righty, so that leaves us with Secretary. And can we hold off on this role until we have, because we have a few board members that are not here? Can we go over meeting without that?
You'd have to ask Tricia if she's willing to serve at the time.
I can, I can do it, right?
All right.
Thank you, Tricia, I appreciate your overview, since we're willing to sign one more holder. Great. So then we will, unless, Laurel, because the rest of us are already enrolled, unless you would like to be the Secretary and start signing all the papers, then we will go ahead and table Secretary to next meeting and see if Leanna or Vicky would be interested. You're on mute.
Thank you, I, I feel like we should delay, and I won't recite all the things I have on my plate, but, thank you, I'll, let's wait and see, thank you.
Great, I just wanted to check in with you before I made an assumption, but.
Very kind of you, thank you.
Okay, so we will table a decision on the Secretary and have that on the next meeting's agenda. Great, so that takes us into item 4.7, to approve the Blue of Finance Committee members. Yeah. Oh, I did see that. I guess I thought that was just a.
We really have one change, right, Kelly?
I think that would be great, yeah. All right, well, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the 22, 23 Finance Committee members?
This is Tricia, I'll make a motion to approve the 22, 23 Finance Committee.
Thank you, Tricia, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kristen, with a second. And then I will call for the vote, Laurel?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
And Amber?
Just somebody to abstain.
Yeah.
I can go into the conference room.
All right, now, item 4.8 would be to appoint the Facilities Committee members.
So that was more like what we just did. The Board of Facilities, number.
Oh. Perfect, I wrote over the ERB and Member, so I didn't know that there was notes on there.
Thank you.
Running out of space, we're running out.
So I, Chelsea, Amber, I'll stick my consent agenda, I don't think I'm going to abstain, so do we.
Yes.
So I can abstain and.
Okay.
So we're.
Thank you, and just for clarification for anybody attending, because we have an uneven board composition with more parents than community members tonight, we do need a parent to abstain from each of our votes, and we missed out on the consent agenda. So thank you, Tricia, for the adjustment and adjustment. There's still plenty of votes to pass. Okay, item 4.9, that takes us into contracts. Susan, would you like to circle E-Rates for us?
Sure, the E-Rate contract is for the consultant that works with us to assure that we comply with the E-Rate report. E-Rate is a funding source which gives us discounts for things like our Comcast rates and T-bills, also has helped to purchase computers through the new funding sources. So, on, E-Rate is an ongoing funding source for a number of decades. It is a little complicated to manage, so we've worked with Rachel White for a number of years, and she says, hey, Susan, you have some money here, you want to spend it? So it's very helpful. And she was referred to us from the U County Office of Education Technology Department, who does our, our test work.
Great, I remember when we first pursued this, and what a big difference E-Rate makes. Great, does anybody have any questions for Susan on this contract or on E-Rates in general? All right, hearing and seeing none, our community members to you also. Raise your hand if you have many of these items as well. But with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the contract. This is Tricia, I'll make a motion to accept the E-Rate contract.
This is Laurel, and I second.
Thank you, Laurel, for the second. And I will call for the vote, Laurel.
Aye.
I'm Amber, abstain.
Kristen?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Okay, now on to the School Psychologist contract.
We have currently a shared school psychologist. Her name is Jo, Jo Lynn. She is a retired school psychologist from Tohono Kai working with us part-time in a shared contract between ourselves and Sherwood. We are still potentially hiring a full-time between ourselves and Sherwood school psychologist for the possibility of somebody who is ready to come in in December, who is also wanting to enroll their child with a look. So, so this is a temporary, as she can only work part-time, but it is a contract that I would like to.
Great, well, I'm glad that we're still able to continue working with other charities in the area to share some of these positions, because it allows us to get such a higher caliber of employee training, so thank you for continuing that work. All right, so anybody have any questions about the school psychologists for this contract? Okay, hearing that, I wonder if you mentioned that through the contract with school psychologists.
This is Kristen, I'll make a motion to approve for 292 school psychologist contract.
I'll second it, it's Amber. Thank you, Kristen, for the motion, and Amber with the second. We'll call for the vote, Laurel?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Tricia?
Abstain.
Kristen?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
All right, item 4.9.3, Family First Independent Agency.
So Family First is a, an agency here in town. We've worked with one of the staff members before, she was not a staff member there at the time, but now she looks at them. This is for a behavior consultant. So we have about four students right now who benefit from a formal behavior plan that is, has to be assessed and reviewed for their behavior, and what sort of things would help them to be able to manage better in classrooms. And so we have asked for this contract. It is generally not a hugely expensive, but very helpful service. So we're asking for you to approve this contract.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Susan on either Family First or the contract?
Just a quick one, something similar like the school psychologists, they will be here, it's more through referral, that's the process for anywhere, maybe school counselor. No, but for the, it's only for a few students.
So what a behavior consultant does is come and observe the student and do some assessment and derive a plan for the staff to implement. So the student, so they, they come on, they took them on campus for the review, and if there's any issues or IP that they, they don't spend a lot of time.
Susan?
Go ahead.
Could I ask, they also collect data and work with teachers and device plans, correct?
Yes, mostly data collection actually comes from the aides, but they would direct what data would need to be collected.
Okay, yes. Thank you.
And since this is a newer thing that we're taking on, Susan, my biggest question would be just the budget, how much space for this?
We're just, they estimate it's maybe $10,000 total.
Okay, excellent, excellent. If you had said it'd be tough, I would ask what could we move? So I think it's very important, so I'm glad to hear that. All right, does anybody else have questions? Hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
No.
The Family First Independent Agency. This is Tricia, I'll make a motion to. Great, Tricia, thank you for your motion, go second.
Amber, I'll second it.
Thank you, Amber. I will call for the vote, Laurel?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Kristen?
Same.
Thank you. All right, now we're getting into the fun stuff. Item 4.10, the 21, 22 unaudited actuals report. Oh, there it is, Jim?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, so this is just the report out on 21, 22, so nothing new here. This was submitted on the 15th, so this is official approval. I think we previously noted, the one kind of item held everything up, and we all had to wait, was what was going to happen with Hold Harmless. And it was determined that the vast majority of the Hold Harmless wasn't going to be recognized until next year. So it's kind of a break even, 21, 22. And so when you look at 22, 23, we expect to have a gain at least equal to the Hold Harmless that we should have recognized in 21, 22, but we weren't allowed to.
Okay. Great, thank you for that, Jim. Does anybody have any other questions on the 21, 22 unaudited actuals report? I'm sure you all stayed up multiple nights poring over this exciting information. All righty, hearing that, I will entertain a motion to approve the unaudited actuals report.
This is Tricia, I'll make a motion to approve the unaudited actuals for 21, 22.
Thank you for your motion, Tricia, I will go ahead and second. All right, I will call for the vote, Laurel?
Aye.
Amber?
Abstain.
Tricia?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And Chelsea?
Aye.
Then 21, 22 EPA, final signature.
So the EPA is just part of your LCFF, your state aid funding. So when we talk about 10,000 per student as an estimate, 11,000, 10,000. So this is just a component of it, but it came with, you know, strings that they wanted you to announce. Eleven thousand, ten thousand. So this is just a component of it, but it came with, uh, you know, strings that they wanted you to announce how you plan to spend the money. And then how you did spend the money. Um, the difference was this year, the total amount funded through that source increased a lot at the end of the year. It didn't change your total funding. It just moved it from unrec, you know. We call unrestricted state aid to EPA state aid, even though EPA is technically unrestricted. Uh, they just want to show that it didn't go to an administrative purpose. And so the normal pattern is to apply the EPA to teacher salaries and benefits. But because the number spiked all the way up to seven hundred and fifty thousand, it was more realistic to say, okay, well, we were. So using that LCFF money to pay for our rent, which is an allowable expense. So it just shifted to show we're paying for teacher salaries and benefits as we anticipated and we were using LCFF money to pay for rent. Now that you've shifted our LCFF money to EPA, that means the EPA money is going to pay for the rent. Um, so this is just for official approval. And then, um, the final approved document can be posted to the website. Uh, showing authorization of use of the EPA money in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yes, thank you, Jim. Right, with that, do I have a motion? Uh, if there are no more questions for Jim, I will entertain a motion to approve the. Twenty-two EPA final expenditures.
I move to approve.
Great, thank you, Laurel. Wait a second. This is Trisha. I'll second it. All right, we have Trisha with a second, and I will call for the vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Amber?
Abstain.
Trisha?
I.
Kristen?
I.
Chelsea?
I.
Right. Um, it now takes us to the twenty-two, twenty-three consolidated application for federal funding.
So that during, during budget development, the council would have authorized participation in federal programs. Primarily Title One, but supplementarily Title Two and Title Four. And the application didn't come out until after budget time. So this is the official application to request council approval to participate in those programs.
Excellent. I would like you to participate in all of the Give Us Money programs. Yeah, we talked about even the couples that were not participating in, that it's really not that much funding and not something that we. Really is kind of worth the time to apply for. So just so you guys know, we did kind of court through this. This would be probably the one thing that we talked about a lot during the finance meetings, so. Well, it's great. Thank you for that feedback. I know some of them are tricky because the number of restrictions and amount of times it takes. Actually, that's costing us more than it was for.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, I'm glad that you guys took the time to look at this. All right, um, if there are no more questions, I will. Entertain a motion.
This is Amber. I'll make a motion to approve the consolidated application for federal funding.
Thank you, Amber. Go for a second. This is Kristen. I second. Thank you, Kristen. I will call for the vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Trisha?
Abstain.
Amber?
I.
Kristen?
I.
Chelsea?
Bye.
Item five, the executive director's report, Susan.
First thing I'd like to share is a few of the favorite moments. First grade, this morning my class had their first silent art walk, looking respectfully at their classmates' nameless pages. The form drawing was challenging and they persevered and seemed really excited to see the work of others. Leanna Lee talked about her research in the Crusades and the kids learning about chess. And I think that's also in the Acorn today. So I would encourage you to go and read the Acorn. My favorite moment of the week was when the third grade class came into my office and sang a song. About Shalom. All I understood is Shalom. That's the only word I really understood and brought me flowers. They all came into the office and stood around the table. And they were adorable and then they left so adorably. No, you have to go that way around the table. That was adorable. So, um, totally enjoyed that. Um, Alex remarks how much he enjoyed the picture day. It's always a fun time. So. Some of the, the favorite moments. Um, beyond that, we are still working and getting closer of staffing. We have still, um, the one position we still have open is a, an A position for first grade. We did offer it out last week and the person made the decision to decline that she wasn't wanting to work full-time. So, and that is a full-time position. So we are still working on that. Aside from that, we have our. The last of our facilities team started last week, doing an excellent job, really pleased with her. Uh, another aide started in kindergarten last week. Uh, bringing up one of our more experienced aides back into second and third grade. She serves second through fifth in some way or another. So I'm the only one there, but she does that. Um, so working on that one last position. And then, um. We have a long-term sub in Spanish and we're working on getting her into an internship program. She is interested in teaching. Um, and completing her teaching credentials. So we're looking at that to see how we can do that. And then we will be pretty much fully staffed. So that's exciting and exhausting, but good. We met the charter, um, as I mentioned earlier, I think the charter leaders. Um, meeting was here and so we toured them around the campus. Um, they're a very different group to tour than the parents. The parents are like listening to every word I say and asking me questions. They're just kind of floating around in classrooms and you're like, come on me, up you go. So, but I had a good chat with them. A really great supportive group. We had, the subject of the meeting was Charter, California Charter Schools Association's assessment of. Charter renewal. And so we now know that based on the last test scores that were official, which is two thousand and eighteen. There are now three stages, and Karen will come along soon and be clearer with this. There are three different, because of fifteen oh five, the legislation was passed. A while ago and then COVID happened. Um, there are now basically three measurements or three stages of charter. I guess that's a west way to put it, of charter renewal. There's low, medium, and high. Um, low, you would only be able to get a two-year renewal. And the district would have to make a lot of explanations as to why. Medium, I mean, get the five-year renewal. And, um, high, you can get a five, seven. We are in, um, the median level. Um, so that says in two thousand and nineteen. Um, we have, um, which is where eighty percent of all charters in California stand. So it's good to be like in the big group. It'd be nice to be in the top group, but we're happy to be in the big group. Um, and that is really based on, you know, those colors on the dashboard. And because we are in a improving school, we are there, um, which is probably where we'll stay. You have to be like all green to be in the top. I'm not sure we'll ever get there. I'm not sure that's our goal. We can talk about that at the meeting. But, um, so in talking to Karen about the, um, scores and so forth, we are doing well. Um, we went up. So we're much closer to being, we're not in the most images with them, but we're very much closer. So we're. Um, so, so feeling a real relief about that, that our charter will probably be a very smooth one. And, um, we will want to have it delivered to the, um, district July first of twenty twenty-four. So we have this year, we have Riley working on it. We have Karen and Jennifer working on it. To kind of go through and get the detail worked out and have next year to do any double checking or just additional discussions. And hopefully have it pass this council in June. Again, right until July first. So that is now the earliest. So if, and if we're able to do that, we would actually have approval by September first. If, you know, sometimes the district will come back and say, hey, we have some time, but we're still looking at the fact of approval we've done. In the September, October timeframe, which would be lovely because that relieves everybody of that concern. Yeah, so, so.
For those of you who haven't been to a charter renewal before, when you actually print out the charter renewal document, it fills a three-beam. Like, this isn't like a, an application to please renew us. It is actually a really substantial thing. So when she talks about spending over a year developing that document to present, it, it really is an intense process. And I'm really excited to have such a great team working on this.
Yeah, we do have a great team. Um, so the next piece that I need to, um, that we'll be working on. And I'll be talking more about to staff and parents. The only thing, being in the median level, the only thing that the charter renewal, the district can really ask for is approval on their scores. So, um, and that means that the I-ready testing we do is what they could ask for. So we will have, you know, we, we've treated the I-readies like this is a nice assessment that helps us. We'll probably be a little bit more insistent that students finish it and complete it and, and get students up to that ninety-five percent. And then if the test doesn't really match what the teacher is seeing in the classroom, ask that question why. Because a lot of times kids will just go through it and we'll go, yeah, we, yeah, they're rushing it, you know, we'll figure that out. Um, but because this will be more of a measurement of the school, we will, over the next year, be a little more insistent that students. Take their time and do their best in the test too. Which I think will be pushed overall school. So, yeah. So that is charter renewal. Um, the other thing that, as Karen has done some of the assessments, and this is not really going to be news to anybody, but. We now have some real data that says that our attendance is affecting our test. So he can say, here's the students that are, are struggling with the tests. And guess what? They want to. So, um, that will help hopefully on that push to for parents to understand why they need to prepare. That's my report.
I have two questions. So, one, uh, if there's newer test scores, will those be the ones that are, that are considered, I guess, as a part of the package?
Yes, so as, as the, um, test scores come in, the new, it's the last two years. So right now, when we're looking at, and I'm saying we're medium, we're at eighteen and nineteen, um, which we're not particularly strong years for the school.
Right.
Our last scores were stronger. We went up in, yeah, like twelve points. Um, so we should still very much be in that improving area. The, um, and then so, so the possibility is we'll use the twenty-two, spring twenty-two. And spring twenty-three years. It's likely that the spring twenty-four will not be ready by July first.
Third grade and above.
Third grade and above.
Okay, so what we do, the big forward is going to be super important.
Yes.
So we at least maintain or go up.
Yes.
And then for the I-ready, you're saying that's in addition, that they might request I-ready?
Yes, that's what they are able to request. And I would assume that they.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah.
And some of the small feedback I got about that is like, some of the kids test lower because of technology too. They're not, it's techie. They're tech savvy. Like, I know some of the other school districts, like. Even in like third grade are doing a lot of computer work, so.
Yeah, definitely our third grade scores, um, could be partially that technology thing. Um, but it's also just things like, um, we've talked about the academic language. Do we use it enough? Um, and so are we really talking about, when we say, do we say add or do we say find the sum? Because the test will say, say find the sum. And if we're saying add and the test is find the sum, then the kid's going to go with the sum. So, so increasing that use of academic language in our daily work. And then things like some of the, um. The tasks that ask to like look at two articles and compare them and that's, so some of those somewhat higher level. Issues, little details that will help our students and are already helping our students as well.
I have a feeling though, actually, it's going to be twenty-three, twenty-four, you said. I bet you're a third and fourth grader higher. Because I think a lot of kids during COVID had access to technology. Well, my oldest was, was the first time she was on Google Doc in fourth grade. So it'd be interesting because I was in, um, helping in second grade and these kids.
Oh, you did cold.
They had access to practice at the I-ready and they knew verbiage, where to click. And it was, it was really, it was impressive to see. Very orderly, very organized in the chef's class at someone's, but it's very interesting to see, you know, times have changed.
Well, I might need to bring them back to, if this is where community education is going.
Right.
Great, thank you, Susan. Um, does anybody have any questions for? That was a, that was a big report tonight. A lot of good stuff. Anybody have questions, comments? Yeah, all right. Well, with that, um, I will thank everybody who has come. You can certainly wait for our report out from closed session, but the, the council will be going into closed discussion for the next. Amount of time.
So Chelsea, I do want to add an announcement based on what the, um, some research we've done. And, and the discussion we've had on the site, that, um, we will be discussing the site, the location of Yosemite and Humboldt. And also a reopening potential of the Fort 50 West Estate.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate that.
You can turn off your.
That. Alex, can you? Into the cyber room.
How's that meeting going for you? Okay?
It's a waiting room and re-pretend you're.
Fort 50 West East Allen. Are we on those?
No, sorry.